Good evening, everybody. April 11th Concord Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting. We're hybrid, some of us are here in the OK's Road and it looks like plenty of people are on Zoom. Before we start, I need to read this note, unfortunately. It goes as follows. Welcome to this virtual meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Due to recent events, only board members, town staff and applicants during their presentations will have the ability to mute, unmute themselves and be able to share screen. During the public comment period for each application, participant that wish to speak need to use the raise hand function when and then when you are recognized by me, you can speak and you will be able to unmute yourself. You will then clearly have to state your name and address for the record, after which you have two minutes to make your statement or ask questions through me to the applicant. And all of that needs to, of course, be pertinent to what's before us at that point in time. I will be trying to facilitate the flow of the meeting and at my discretion, further discussions regarding a statement or question may be appropriate if it could be helpful to the board's deliberation. Everyone is asked to keep your statements and questions about the applications before the board. Yes, as to keep your statements and questions about the application for the board. If, if I inform you that you are out of order, you may be muted. Lastly, please follow the following the town moderator's suggestion. I ask that everybody remain civil and respectful. We may have differences of opinion, but in the end, we are all neighbors and members of this community. So thank you, thank you for that. Just before we start, just an agenda item, and I don't know whether there's anybody on, on the Zoom. Our 7:30 application for special permit for 166 Commonwealth Avenue, the applicant has requested withdrawal without prejudice. So we will discuss that and we will most likely accept that at 7:30. So if you're here for that, you, you may wish to, you may wish to leave the meeting. But of course, you're more than happy to, to stay because it's going to be a lot of fun tonight. And I'm going to take, there's two items scheduled for the seven o'clock. And I, I will take the Bruce Davidson of First Parish Church for a special permit under zoning by law sections 545 and 116 to hold a one day large outdoor event at 20 Lexington Road. Anybody here to speak?
Yes.
Nice to meet you, Ruth. Do you want to?
Stand up or?
Yeah, 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 please stand up.
Yeah. I'm here, I look like Bruce Davidson, that's why I'm here, but I'm really Ray Andrews. I live at 11 Dalton Road, Concord, Mass. And I'm here to apply, I'll read the narrative, basically, that we submitted. It's a democracy, a democracy festival, June 8th from 11 to 2 P. M. In front of the parish hall, so it's in front of the First Parish Church in Concord on 20 Lexington Road. And it's a, it's an attempt to bring people together from Concord and beyond to have fun, eat good food and learn about current events, current issues rather, facing democracy, environment, immigration, racial justice, women's health, other important social justice issues. The event will take place in front of the church in Concord, 20 Lexington Road. That'd be a, the purposes permit is for the festival itself. It will be outdoors, there will be food from Camilla's, the local restaurant on Main Street, a food truck named Chicken on the Road, get it? And an ice cream truck provided by Reasons to be Cheerful in West Concord. And there'll be social justice booths, activities for families, arts and crafts tables, games, opportunities to meet and hear from local government representatives. And there'll be music and we'll use the parish hall in the event the weather is bad on June 8th. Opportunities for kids and their parents to learn about and experience democracy in action. Social justice booths, that sort of thing, educational material. Any questions?
Thank you. You've, you've had the.
Last year, yeah, last year it rained, so this whole activity was just for training purposes, obviously. So last year we had it indoors because of the fact that we, there's a lot of people involved. So rescheduling it is much a bigger hassle than just moving indoor.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the board?
Yeah, I noticed last year your permit was from 11 to 4, I believe. This year, you're cutting back 11 to?
Cutting back shorter, yeah, I think that, you know, it's, yeah, I, I, last year it was a long time in the, in the church and we had a turnout of 150, 200 people maybe. And so obviously with a food truck outside, a lawn and the food truck and the ice cream truck, I expect we'll have, and on this nice Saturday, you know, which I forecasted, I'm just kidding you. You know, if it's a nice Saturday, we'll have people in town wandering around. So it'll be, you know, residents and, and people, tourists and so forth.
Yeah.
Yeah, be a shorter time period.
I saw some reference to a speaker on Friday night, but that's all taken indoors, right?
Right, that's, it's, yeah, the permit doesn't involve that, but yes, there'll be a speaker, probably a couple of speakers on Friday night, there'll be a forum on Friday night in the church related to the same program, same agenda, sort of.
No questions, okay. No further questions from the board. I will open it up for public comment.
I have a map if you'd like, of, of, you know.
Anybody raising their hand online? Not seeing, not seeing anything, right? Anybody here wanting, wishing to speak? Not seeing anybody here as well, closing the public comment section of this hearing. Members of the board, where do you want to go?
I mean, I think we were happy with the application last year and it's even narrower, so I'm happy with it this year.
Excellent. My question's good?
Yes.
May I have a motion?
All right, move that. We approved the application of Bruce Davidson for the First Parish Church for a special permit under zoning by law sections 545, 116 to hold a one day large outdoor event in 20 Lexington Road. Standard conditions.
Same condition as last year, right?
Things like here, right.
Good, second?
Second?
All of the favor? All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
She, she is in the building, see it.
She, is she in the building?
It's on her walk.
Okay, because we need her.
Wow.
Thanks.
Wow, thank you, Chris.
Are you feeling festive tonight?
So festive, yay!
Okay, all right, at 7 o'clock, Novo Riverside Commons LLC for a comprehensive permit pursuant to MGL Chapter 40B, Paragraphs 20 to 23 for a 201 unit multifamily development at 292 and 294 Baker Avenue, which is a 10.2 acre portion of the real property known and numbered as 300 and 310 Baker Avenue. Okay, last time when we met virtually, we went through the waivers. Since then, there's been a lot of back and forth mainly between town council and their council on the, the decision. And I'm not quite sure, is Mina, Mina, Mina's online? I mean, and. I'm not, I, I think I want to just go to the board first and then, and then miss one. There was a couple of outstanding items, I think, over the afternoon, I think just need to quickly tie fate on. Quickly, my visual thinking here. But, you know, since it was, this decision was sent out to four different attorneys last night. You know, I'm, I'm bracing here. So who wants to kick this off? Does anybody have anything major? Let's, let's start there.
I do not have anything major. I have a question about whether the, yeah, the blanks were filled in, but it sounds like we're going to be getting to that.
Well, you know, we did such a great thorough job that I think we've.
Town Council did such a good job.
I don't have anything now.
Sorry about that.
That's why you make the big bucks, Tom.
There was a discussion at times with, it was originally five stories, correct?
Right.
For, and then we went to four and six, I thought.
No, four, five and six.
So with reference in the draft opinion, it is now to accommodate a five and six story building, is that correct? I just, yeah, okay, learned. In an item of having a waiver, these comments relate to waiver issues and this is on the minimum parking, et cetera. And it said that the applicant and the project will have rights on adjacent properties. And my question is, how will that be confirmed? Because the agreement just says that to comfort it together with the ability for shared overflow parking reciprocal rights on the adjacent 300 Baker Avenue parcel. My question was, how will that be confirmed?
In what sense?
Well, how?
It, it is allowed by zoning, right? Well, quite, quite, I mean, I, yeah.
No, just saying, the apartments have as many parking spaces as are required, assuming that the decision is adopted.
But this is saying, I'm sorry.
There was some concern about whether putting any little parking spaces were sufficient. And in way to address that concern, the notation there just says, and be mindful that if there ever were an issue, which we don't think there will be, that if there were an issue, then there would be the ability of the two adjoining property owners, who are related to each other, to accommodate emergency or overflow or.
I, I don't, I don't think, so correct me if I'm wrong, Tom. I, I don't think that's the question. So during all the conversation, there was, the residents would be able to use the parking garage at night. The residents have the ability to go use the basketball court and the little field, grass field area. And so I think that's your question.
This is part of it in some way, with my lawyer hat on, and I suspect you too. That usually gets into an agreement somewhere.
Like they're still able to use the main driveway out to Baker Ave.
Right, and so I think to answer your question, because the two property owners are related, if you will, anything like to have use of the recreational field or whatnot, we will put in place the, the appropriate easements then, just because.
Sorry, you're putting in place what?
The appropriate easements, because, you know, both, both Novo Riverside and both tourists want to make certain that it's, it's properly papered, you know, that, that they have the rights on record, so.
But I don't think there's a condition that reflects that.
I, yeah.
Correct, well, there may be a reference somewhere that says with easements to be.
At least as it relates to my issue, there isn't.
Okay.
Based on what I've read.
Correct me if you're wrong, I think it's a requirement of the permit that apartment dwellers be able to use the recreational area behind the. Therefore, it's a condition of the permit, it must happen. Exactly how it happens is normally with a cross easement agreement, which is already in place now for the whole property, but it'll have to be expanded because we'll have a new lot.
Correct, but.
That will be in it.
This, this project and it's, and the lot is going to be carved off as, you know, an A and R condition got added. So I, I think, I mean, it's fairly simple, you know, prior, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant execute appropriate, provide copies of the easements. The easements for.
Elizabeth, I, I think if you're looking at other conditions, F3, I think is where this fits in. It already, it says the applicant will ensure that Novo Riverside Common tenants will have the right of access and use of the 300, 310 Baker Ave recreational activity court areas upon terms and conditions to be agreed to by both the applicant and CD 1211 Property LLC. What I might suggest is rather than keeping it to that breadth, to, to Tom's point, it might say as pursuant, rather than upon terms and conditions pursuant to an easement to be agreed to by both applicant and CD 12 Property LLC prior to the issuance, I think you said for the occupancy permit, right?
So my suggestion would be to, so court areas pursuant, pursuant to an easement. And then I would like to suggest moving that from out of F3 up to E, it would be like E12. So it would actually puts timing into it.
Yes, and, and I, I, I agree with that from personal experience. I, I appreciate Stephanie, I think you, you just said it was something that the parties would do. I have seen a project where one of the two parcels gets sold and now they don't get along quite as well as related parties. So it would be nice to have that easement done while, while the two entities are controlled by the same party.
Just a quick question, is there an E11?
There's going to be now, oh, no, E11, not E12, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. I'm just getting E11, how can this be E12? Okay, thank you.
But Tom, that doesn't address your parking.
Well, if they include them.
But that's not being put in this condition, is it?
Right, of access to and use of. Oh, so yeah, so this condition doesn't talk about parking and actual cross easements for the driveways.
You might want to add a reference to parking, but there's a lot of cross easements that are existing and a lot of cross easements that will be created for access utilities, et cetera.
Yeah. So I'm just cross, cross easements for access, not, this is just access to and use of the recreational court, it doesn't say parking or cross vehicular pedestrian access. Okay, so the applicant will ensure that Novo Riverside Commons tenants shall have the rights of access to and use of 300, 310 Baker Ave recreational activity areas. Do you want to say?
Portions of the parking.
Yeah, portions.
Of the parking facilities.
Of the parking facilities.
And in this particular case, and the driveway to Baker Avenue Extension. Because what you want the residents to have the ability to do is to go through 300, 310 to get to Baker Avenue Extension.
Okay.
Yeah, right, right now, the common drive aisle goes from Baker Avenue Extension down the aisle A, if you will, and stops when you get past the armored safeguard and hotel. So we'll extend that down to the main cross drive in front of 300.
Okay.
Bring it across the front of the building and connect it to the apartments.
So portions of the parking facilities and driveway access to Baker Ave Extension pursuant to an easement upon terms and conditions to be agreed upon. Read to by both the applicant and CD 211 Property LLC.
And you included in the recreational courts.
I left that, I left that there. Okay. Good.
Next one is under conditions. Item 23 is just an education for me. It says a springing affordable restriction. I've never heard that term, I don't know what it means.
So I, I don't know which one of us wants to say that.
I'll, I'll start, but Stephanie, by all means, please fill in. So, Tom, the idea is that given that the regulatory agreements sometimes have expiring affordability conditions based on their tenure of the financing, the, this condition springs into, hence the term, into effect upon the conclusion of that to become perpetual.
Love it.
I'll give Liz Russ the credit for the term, for, for, for adding that term, but it's, it's a term that's been used elsewhere.
I'm now referring to item 29 and item 31. Have we made a decision about the allocation for the percentage of local residents that should be favored? Because this is general language, so I didn't know if we.
What, mention that, but move it up to 28, right, is where it says.
We're on page 11?
Same question as you, because it says to the extent allowed local permits carriers for the maximum allowable percentage. Is that, does that do enough? And then it says, as, as requested by the town during the initial lease up, so doesn't the town have to provide?
That's all we did, I, and, but do we need to do that as part of this agreement?
Yeah, I have the same question.
Say that again?
Remember we had the discussion about, will the applicants be restricted for the subsidized units? To 70% for example, or 60%, whatever. And there was some discussion, and my memory is that Judy, I believe the lady was our advisor, gave us some insight on that point. And the question is, has this board made a determination of the percentage they wish to apply to the subsidized units to be restricted to Concord-based people or not?
Yeah, 70%, which is the maximum allowable by.
My question is, I thought there were other criteria that had to be specified. We just say 70% local or there's?
We, we, correct, we have, our preference is 70%. And then.
There's, there's, there's fair housing and Mina, Stephanie could jump in, there's fair housing requirements that, so we may require and be, the subsidized agency may say, yes, we'll give you 70%. But if that pool does not meet fair housing requirements, then that pool gets supplemented.
Yeah, okay, I remember that, okay, so saying just the maximum allowable percentage, we're saying 70% and then other than that, we may be limited, we may be required, but other things the board.
Yeah, and, and the important part from the applicant's standpoint or what they're bound to is essentially they're saying whatever we can, we, they will cooperate with us to get what, what the town wants to get to the extent it can get it, and then if it wants it does, they'll abide by those. Effectively, that's the purpose of the language in the decision.
Right.
Item 63, it simply says under a brand NTD confirm, I don't know what that means.
All right, so I'm not sure which version you're looking at, because.
Whatever you said last night.
Yeah, I have that too, 1717 from Manhole.
Only got, didn't come up.
Yeah, so it's on that, 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 that was confirmed today, right?
Yes.
That, that changed slightly today, Elizabeth, I, I think you can describe it. This is the sewer design conditions, the, that, that was no to draft confirm because we were confirming with the sewer department, with water and sewer, what they were doing. But Elizabeth, you can describe what, where we ended up on that, I believe, if I can.
So where we, where we ended up is that the condition will read sewer design, prepare and submit to CPW Water and Sewer Division and Engineering Evaluation. I'm going to make sure I bring up the right one. Engineering evaluation of the public and private sewer infrastructure that is expected to receive the proposed sewage flow from this development. Given the volume of wastewater anticipated from the project, the capacity evaluation shall include consideration of.
The gravity sewer from the property to the sewer pump.
The existing gravity sewer infrastructure from the Tyon Manhole on site to the Asabit Sewer Pumping Station. Evaluate the impact of Novo Riverside's flow on the running time of the pumps. And, yes.
Yeah.
And the Asabit Sewer Pumping Station.
Yeah, well, that's.
The Asabit Sewer Pumping Station, evaluate the impact of the Novo Riverside's flow on the running time of the pumps.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's that was, yeah.
Yeah, under item E, conditions to be satisfied prior to the issuance. Any certificate of occupancy number 1D is talking about the $100,000 traffic mitigation contribution that the applicant will be making. And it said that it doesn't need to be made effectively until the certificate of occupancy is issued for the second building. And I'm saying, why wouldn't it be for the first building? Why wouldn't you get the money earlier than later? Because you hopefully Main Street activities will be done or in place within the next year or two.
I, I think, Tom, I, I may be reading this slightly differently and Stephanie or Elizabeth or others tell me if you disagree. So I, I think if you look at the, the prefacing language in the number one there, prior to the issuance certificate for, for certificate of occupancy for either building, you get the $100,000 when you go to D. And then the point there is no additional fee will be required for the second building. So it's not that we're waiting for the second building. It's just clarifying that we're not going to ask for a second $100,000 check at the, at the second buildings. Yeah, so you get it before, you get it before the first building, but it won't, and that's it, you just don't get it the second time.
Is there someplace in here that would authorize the town to ask for the $100,000 before a certain event? When can the town ask for the money?
Well, they're, prior, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for either building.
Correct.
They have to pay the $100,000.
But a certificate of occupancy for any building, assume the first building, indicates that building's pretty well done, ready to occupy. And I'm saying that by the time we get to that point and in the construction process, we're out a couple of years and the activity at Main and Baker, I'm assuming, hopefully, will be done by then or well along. Why wouldn't you ask for the money before any certificate of occupancy is issued?
That's what the decision says. Because A is what you have to do before you get any certificate.
I, I think, I think Tom's point is, your suggestion would be prioritization of a building permit they provide.
You go there within six months after the issuance of the building permit. I don't care about, but I don't think you ought, I'm, I would suggest that we may not have to wait until CFO issues for the either building. That's two or three years out.
I believe in that, the, the part of the thought is that because this would be applicant paying their share of it before any certificate, there's, there is, they're not contributing anything to the traffic until there's a certificate of occupancy, if that makes sense. So if our fair share contribution, if you will, there's, there's no impact until the building's ready to be occupied. So I think that was the, if you're wondering the thought process.
I understand, I mean, I understand your position.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not sure I agree with it, but I understand, so it's up to the board to.
Well, I mean, it's the thing, right? Like if you wait until then to get the money, you can't start.
You're not prepared.
The intersection improvements, they did it, they're all moving into the building.
Well, so the intersection improvements are going to move forward.
Regardless, right?
Regardless.
Yeah.
And so this was, this $100,000 was going towards the applicant paying a proportionate share of the additional impacts that the project, the additional traffic the project would have on the intersection. So.
And, 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 and speaking with the CPW also, I, I think that this intersection most likely will be done before there is. intersection most likely will be done before or is construction will be finished. So they were sort of, you know, because they don't have the money right now. And you said, I'll have to find the money. I have to take it out of other parts, line items. So I think this money will then go back into into those other line items so that they can move forward with getting that intersection done.
Backup ones, again, item sixty-five, it's a word that I'm not familiar with. The applicant shall submit a final lotting, L O T T I N G, or approval not required. I don't know what a final lotting. I don't know that word.
It's a synonym for an approval not required lot creation plan. So it's just a plan that shows different lots from what used to be the.
I think Fields and Thomas actually used on the title of the A and R. The words.
On our initial draft, it's called a lotting plan.
Let's see, I am. This would be under item three of conditions that must be satisfied prior to CFO. Item three is confusing to me because it deals with performance guarantees. I understand performance guarantees. And having said that, why do we wait to get a performance guarantee until all stormwater drainage facilities and the base course of pavement have been installed? For example, why would we wait? Why wouldn't we ask for performance guarantees from day one when that building permit is issued?
I I think because, you know, when when you issue the building permit, you know, you assume that the contractor gets started and gets gets going. Right? And the moment you have starting to have doubts or they they can't perform, then you ask for a.
It's too late. It's too late. My experience says to me, if you don't have that performance guarantee in place at the start of construction and something goes bad, you've got your hands full because no bonding company is going to step up to the plate in the midst of a default. That's why you have that performance guarantee in place from day one so that you have concern now. We could say, look, we'll take the risk because it will cost them some additional money. Performance bonds are not cheap. I understand that. But if they, if the applicant is in the midst of construction and for whatever reasons, and that we now know given COVID and all the other crazy things going on, things happen. And a contractor and the applicant say, whoa, we're out of here. Because I am assuming that the applicant will require a performance and payment bond from his general contractor. And it seems to me as the, on our behalf, we'd want a performance and payment bond to make sure that project keeps going forward and with a minimum of disruption. So that's the short race.
Counterpoint might be that I think what this is talking about is not the building, but common facilities or common infrastructure, waterline, powerline, sewer line, all of which are a small portion of the cost of the project.
Great.
So in a way, this is kind of the tail of the dog. And once that building starts going up and you can't get a CFO until the infrastructure is in, I think that's pretty good. Detective on the part of the developer to make sure that.
You don't get to see it. You don't get to CFO when the infrastructure is, and you get to CFO when the building is about ready to be occupied.
But you can't do that without the infrastructure.
I understand that. So if you're saying, look, we'll, we would be comfortable that upon completion of the infrastructure, we will give you a full performance and payment bond to the value remaining on the construction contract. That would be something worth considering.
I I think the the issue there, and and this is in part that addresses the kind of phasing of of the build out as well, right? So when you're doing it, you don't need, like, let's say you're working on two ninety-two first. So you don't need to have all of like the paving in place necessarily for two ninety-four.
Well, for us, I would just happen to disagree with you only because it strikes me that giving this permit for a project we think is a good project, we appreciate all you've done. We think it's in the benefit of the town, the community, so we have no quarrel with that. I think all of us would feel terrible if somewhere in the course, early on in that project, if things didn't go well. And all of a sudden, it stops, you have to get a new contractor, whatever. I've been through that. It is a terrible, terrible situation. And that thing could just die for six months or a year. Something's out there, it looks awful. If you don't have that bond in place that you can go and get that job done by somebody else, it just stagnates. So that's where I'm coming from.
You know, I I I hear you on that one. Is this is this a common condition?
It's a it's a common, it's a common condition for subdivisions. For planning board subdivisions, a performance guarantee is required. Usually, the performance guarantee is a restrictive covenant on the sale of the lots until all the infrastructure is put in, stormwater is put in, and the road is done down to binder course. Then they can request the lease of individual lots so long as the remaining lots cover the remaining cost. Once you get to a tipping point, then the applicant provides an alternative form of performance guarantee to cover the remaining work so that all the lots can be released.
There there is a difference between the subdivision where you're putting in a road and then selling raw land because you could very easily sell the raw land without the road being done. And then the town loses its leverage. So hence the bond. Here, no new road. And the only thing we're doing is building a building on land that we already, we're not selling the land, building the building. And if you can't occupy the building until you've done the infrastructure work, the the CFO is the prize and it's seventy-five million dollars per building worth of motivation.
I'm not aware of a performance guarantee being required prior to like the issuance of a building permit. The only other project-based performance guarantee is prior to the CFO, the whole prior, the whole project has to be completed, including landscaping. And if you want to move forward and get a CFO and let's say your landscaping is not put in yet and you're only down to binder course, you can provide a performance guarantee for those remaining items to allow, you know, a CFO to be issued. Those are those are the only two that I'm aware of.
And I'm not, pardon me, I would disagree with you. I guess my concern is that we are, this is a big building, a big project, and the two buildings collectively for Concord are big buildings and wonderful buildings, which we're happy to have, going to be a big, big advantage, I believe. I'm suggesting that we want to make sure that those buildings get built on time without unnecessary delays due to the default, either of financing unlikely or contractor default. Not likely, but it happens. So that's why I'm just suggesting the voting members of the board, you need to know that is the risk. And if you wait to get, you don't have a CFO, you don't need a, Mike, you don't need a bond, performance or payment bond at CFO. Everything is done by then.
Yeah, right. But it 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 is not something that is typically done, right? And yes, these are.
In the private sector, it is typical. In the private sector, it is typical.
I'm I'm I'll let Mina speak, but I'm not aware of the town having that type of performance guarantee for a project at that phase.
Yeah, so I I think there might be just a few different pieces going on and so the performance guaranteed that's in here is just for the infrastructure, common facility improvements. Not the building. I agree with Tom in private projects, it is common. And in projects where a town is got a proprietary interest, I certainly recommend it, you know, where where you have the landowner, et cetera. I'm curious if, you know, one, I it it is not common, though I agree with Elizabeth, to have a performance guarantee on the construction of the the private building portion under a regulatory decision like this, under a, you know, a zoning or comprehensive permit. However, the timing can have a slightly different varieties. The and Tom, I'm not sure if this addresses your issue, if it's something that the Novo team be willing to do. At the moment, this is drafted so that the performance guarantee can't, would be requested at the earliest at the installation of stormwater drainage facilities and base course of pavement have been installed. One possibility is if Novo would be willing to move it up to where construction on those facilities, the drainage facilities and pavement has begun. And my thinking here is that from the town's perspective, if the building is half done, that is certainly unfortunate. It's a it's a big problem. But that is a risk with private developers building on private land for better or for worse regardless. However, if there is infrastructure that is starting to be built and otherwise needs to be finished by the town, half-built infrastructure can be problematic. And so that's, that's what I'm wondering if 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 maybe moving that slightly up, so it's not all the way at the building permit phase, but the beginning of those facilities.
But, yeah, and but that, I mean, the the paving and the and then obvious utilities are going in first, and paving comes on top of that. And after that, and after that, you'll start digging foundation because then the contractor has decent access. So that's just the way it goes anyways.
That's the timing it is, and that's the time it is now. Yeah.
Right, right. And I mean, they they won't start construction until there's pavement so they can have good access around the building. And obviously, before that, the the utilities need to go in. So that's step number one.
And so. But but timing wise, I read this as it's the applicant who can request to post the bond to get the CFO before they've done certain things, right? So moving that earlier and letting them request to post the bond earlier, I think is worse for us. We should just make them finish it, finish these things before they can ask for the bond, right?
And and finish a bond you can get for relatively short dollars. A bond before you even start is going to be very expensive. And my point, I think, not necessary for the reason that the chairman is mentioning.
And Robbie, just to be clear, the fact that a bond exists wouldn't necessarily obviate the obligation to build. It would be just to back up in case they don't build. So if they provided on, you know, if they were to provide it today, there's you know, I I I agree with the financial piece that was just mentioned. It may not be possible to, but they can provide it anytime and the town can hold it. And that's not the issue. It's the issue is, when is it too late, I think, was Tom's point, is it too, when it's too late to have it? But it is coming in at the at the latest at the moment once stormwater and pavement have been installed. The question is, you know, if there's any point earlier than that, that makes sense to it. And realistically, I would say it's really only when that begins, that's probably the earliest you can reasonably expect it, if at all.
That's going to be your call, but.
Yeah, yeah.
On the item thirteen C, it's one of those, again, subject to final confirmation prior to board meeting. It's the applicant has volunteered to work with the town on amending the recorded conservation restriction and baseline documentation on the property if it is determined necessary in the subject to in parentheses, I didn't know whether that's been done.
It was done, right?
I'm sorry?
It was it was done, right? We 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 got. You want to read it? Somebody needs to read it.
I was gonna say, I I have a, I have amended language, but I don't know if that's, because I I think that I had my communication and I haven't heard anything further on that discussion point, if there's a discussion point on that, on thirteen C.
Yeah, no. So this is the version that you just resent before. So so originally, it's the the applicant has volunteered to work with the town on amending the reported conservation restriction baseline documentation on the property if it is deemed necessary. What didn't come through yours, it's it was supposed to be just subject to final confirmation prior to the board meeting. That was just a note. It's.
No, you don't. I I believe.
It was only supposed, that's not part of the condition.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
So that wasn't part of the condition. That was just a note. Town Council that we put in note to self that this was something to still be discussed. So I guess we can now discuss it because Stephanie has proposed alternate language. Yeah, you want to go ahead?
Would would you like me to read?
If the town determines that an amendment to the existing recorded conservation restriction is necessary for the town's bridge and trail project and or the trail connector, the applicant agrees to cooperate upon its review, sign relevant applications, middle or acknowledgements as necessary for the town to revise the existing conservation restriction. The applicant has not volunteered any financial contribution and shall not be deemed to volunteer to provide any engineering or surveying in-kind contributions other than those related solely to the property as necessary to assist the town in its preparation of necessary revisions to the existing conservation restriction plan relating to the town's bridge and trail project and or the trail connector. So my my concern, I do not want this decision to reference the bridge, the town's bridge as far as being part of this decision. It can and may put in jeopardy the town's funding through the transportation improvement program. And I'm 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 not willing to have the state come back and say that, well, you were in already in negotiations with the applicant and put something in jeopardy. But as far as I I understand the reasons for this statement, the applicant has not volunteered any financial contribution and shall not be deemed to volunteer to provide any engineering or surveying in-kind contributions other than those related solely to the property as necessary to assist the town. That's a very long way of saying that they're they're going only going to provide assistance with amending the C R and the baseline documentation on the property.
What was the part about upon their review?
Yeah, I'm not sure about that. That's to the extent that if there's any consents or applications that are needed to be submitted relative to amending a C R and it requires the the owner's signature. So we're just preserving, we ask to reserve the right to review the documentation rather than playing inside anything.
I was listening to it as a blind pass, but is that how it reads?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's agrees to cooperate for ren I E, upon its review, sign relevant applications.
Are they still agreeing to construct in approximately two hundred twenty?
Yes, all of that's still.
That's still there.
And Elizabeth, we would have no trouble if you delete out the language with respect to the town bridge.
Or or perhaps we just use language municipal projects. Does that help you?
I'm 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 not sure. All I have been told by certain people in the state agency is, whatever you do, do not have this decision hint at there being this requirement.
Right. So take out anything that doesn't refer to the trail, which is part of the work that Torres is doing. Because Torres will cooperate with the town on the rest of it as you go forward.
So I so I I and I'll I'll wait for Mina to chime in, but I would say it it would be it would cause me less anxiety if, you know, if an amendment to the existing recorded conservation restriction is necessary. I I it's, it it is not going to be the town determining that. It will be the executive office of E O E E A Environmental. E O E E A Environmental.
Oh, yeah. Environment agent first, yeah.
Yeah, there you go. And and, you know, so. Striking the town's bridge and trail project, you know. And so it would just be restriction. Is necessary because this comprehensive permit is only dealing with that trail connector. So if it's determined that it's necessary to construct the trail connector. The applicant agrees to cooperate the remaining. I have I have no, I have no problem with the remaining.
Elizabeth, I I agree with that. I think that gets us safely there. I think from Novo's perspective. What I understand the issue is, you know, you want to be clear that this is not. A financial contribution you're making. This is cooperation. From the town's perspective, we that's all we need as well. And and this is the case where the town. Is not asking for and in fact would not want more assurances than that. So. I think keeping it to that simple language Elizabeth. Had makes makes the most sense.
I understand the reasons why. There there are. Two other properties that will also have to have the the conservation restriction amended and a new restriction added. And and the planning division will move forward with that separately.
And I think there's just one other. Concern and we don't think that's gonna come to pass, but. And it's it's the issue of. If for some reason, the town project doesn't advance, we don't want a trail going to nowhere.
Right.
It's one, it's expensive and two, I don't think it serves anybody because of those impacts, you know, to the environment. So. How do we like get that kind of weaved in as well?
We we don't. We've been back and forth with this and Torres has decided that. They will build the two hundred and forty feet. Once the town says it can be built. So we shouldn't deal with that.
That's that's in the prior subsection, I believe. I think that's that's not changing if I'm not mistaken.
It's somewhere.
It's in the it's in the it's in.
Okay, so we're not. So just so I'm clear that we're not removing that that those other provisions where it relates to the trail and bridge and subpart B is only in. Amending the C R. In C.
Elizabeth, I believe that was that was a. The the piece. The rest had not changed from what we discussed last night. Elizabeth, is there a must or something that I'm missing here?
Okay, no. And so the previous part where it talks about. You know, it's just talking about the doing the trail connection. And, you know, completion of that. And then when it talks about the town's portion of the trail bridge project. It it's only talking about making sure that things match and are harmonious.
Okay, so we're not adjusting adjusting that language.
No, I don't. I don't. I don't have. I don't. I I don't have a problem with that one because it's just. You know. If something needs to happen to make them mesh, that's fine. You're just agreeing to that. The other one with the conservation restriction. Is more of, you know. If we determine it's necessary, you're going to work with us. And that's why the, you know, taking out the words, the town determines that an amendment is necessary. That's helpful and. For the trail connector, it it's either gonna have to be amended or or it's not. You know, we're just, we're not there yet. So I'm good with that. Oh, Mina got disconnected. He'll be right back. Hey.
There were two. And item fifteen and item eighteen, again, it's said subject to final confirmation. Those.
That's the the fold over.
Okay.
So fifteen dealt with the this comprehensive permit shall control the development of the project. Is that correct?
Yes.
Into the. So I I I don't. Yes, so that was just held in there and you have what the final version that town council. You know, did review and have agreed to no issues.
And it's the same truth right of eighteen.
Yes. Eighteen deals with all the.
The existing leases. On three ten, three three ten acre.
That one, the only change to that one is shared and over. Shared overflow. Parking reciprocal rights. Got deleted. It says, it just says parking reciprocal rights. No, no, on on your version, it says shared and overflow.
Right.
Got deleted. So it just said parking reciprocal rights.
Right. And so the intent of that is just. So three hundred and three ten Baker already has all of these permits and approvals in place. So by approving. Two ninety-two, two ninety-four. What it does is it basically through forty B, it says, okay, this is this is permitted and this isn't undoing those existing. Permits that you have associated with those permits.
Let him back in.
Yep, yep, he did.
I need to make a code. I don't know if you can make a code for. Sorry, Stephanie, I just. I forgot I let I have to let I have to make Mina.
Mina, Mina, I think you're in.
I can come back at my apologies. I got disconnected on my. Phone that I was using died, and so I'm back in on a computer now. My apologies.
Did that answer your question? Sorry.
Almost no.
Okay.
Under item G, construction and bonding conditions, paragraph seventy. It said the town agents shall provide at least twenty-four hours notice before they can come on. To look at the site or talk about things. I suggest to you that twenty-four hours should be down to four or six hours. If there's a problem that is of concern to any of the town engineers. For whatever reason, they shouldn't have to wait twenty-four hours. To go onto the site and check it out.
Well, it does say except in the case of exigent circumstances or emergency. You think it should be even less restrictive than that?
Yeah, I don't think I don't think with matter, to be honest with you, if you give them four or six hours, whoever's your project manager on site. They're used to having folks come on. So they don't need twenty-four hours in my experience.
Yeah, I'm 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 fine with that. I'm looking at the applicant, what they what they think. I mean, it's sort of like. Yeah, I don't don't think that that's something that's of importance, but, you know, but that it is.
If they really need to get on, I think we would argue it's an exigent circumstance.
Yeah.
The difficulty with right now. Is that depending upon what the issue is. The right person might not be on site.
Right, that was gonna be my comment.
You let them know a day ahead of time. Tomorrow I need to come talk about whatever.
Yeah.
Then the right people will be there.
Right.
My answer, my answer to that would be that's your problem, not mine. And if you if you are person on site, somebody's gonna be in charge. Even if the. Chief project person is gone, someone's gonna be in charge and that person could say, I'm not in a position to answer that question. Johnny Jones, who will be back tomorrow morning, can take care of it.
Yeah, but so is it ending back to twenty-four? But it's all, it's not necessarily. Construction per se, it's also just a stormwater issue and and, you know, then, you know, wheels and Thomas need to be there.
Although I kind of see your point. Why shouldn't anyone be able like my store? Anyone can come in anytime I expect, but you don't have to give me notice. But the board has.
So let me ask. And I I did not. See this one, so I apologize. But I I think once the building permit is issued. I think the building inspections division has the right to enter the property to inspect. Whenever.
Yeah.
They feel it's necessary. That's not.
Not for this paragraph. They could not. They would not be able to do that.
No. Not the building.
In my opinion, Ray would not be able to walk onto the property without twenty-four hours notice, except in an emergency.
I I don't I don't think that's though.
No, no, I agree with with the applicant because it says they to determine compliance with the provisions of this decision, but it doesn't say anything about any of the other applicable. Right, so so the. Construction of the stormwater drainage and and. Stormwater drainage is covered by this decision. It's not covered by the building permit. And Paul can chime in, but and it's it's covered by this decision. So if. If. Somebody noticed downstream, there's a lot of sediment. You know, the. Engineering division would have to give you twenty-four hours to go in and.
Sounds like an emergency.
So that's.
Sounds like an emergency.
Okay, so I I'm.
I I agree with you, Tom. I'm also kind of trying to think of a practical purposes, how are they gonna argue that's not an emergency and then we they came in, you know, under.
They might. And you know who defines emergency?
Exigent, I mean.
I I would argue that I do what I think engineering can. Define an emergency to any of the town's infrastructure. Delia can define an emergency to any impact to. Wetlands or rivers. The fire department can define any emergency to public health, safety and welfare. So.
How reasonable notice?
Not. And I I would also have the sense that the. The general contractor is not going to do any favors to the applicant or the town if they're like, oh, you didn't give us twenty-four hours and we don't. Believe that this is exigent, like I think it's a reality if the town comes on and says this is an emergency matter. They're gonna accommodate.
So the suggestion. The town's agents shall provide reasonable notice prior to entry.
Then you could argue about what.
There we go.
It's everyone can argue about that and what's an emergency.
It it's it's.
We're we're splitting.
Yeah.
I think reasonable is good, though, because.
I agree.
So let's just say, sure.
There you go.
No one's gonna read it anyhow.
We're reading it. Okay.
Just posted on the site.
Anything else?
Well, let's see. Yes. Last one, friends.
Okay.
Under H validity, et cetera. Item three. It talks about that the comprehensive permit shall lapse three years, et cetera, et cetera. If a substantial use. Has not, et cetera. And I would have said if substantial use of the second building. Has not sooner commenced.
So I'm gonna let Mina answer this one because I'm aware that this has those words substantial use.
Yes.
Meaning under case law. So substantial use would be.
Not changing those.
The the issuance of a building permit would trigger substantial use. It's not a it's not a use of the. Of the buildings. It's a use of this decision. It's not a it's not a use of people by people. It's the use of this decision.
It's really.
Yes.
Position based on.
Go ahead, Vina.
It's substantial use usually in clause includes, and there's a lot of. Back and forth law on this over the years, but the the upshot is it includes both the actual use of the site for. The intended final use, but also diligent prosecution of of construction towards that. So it, once you begin. Building, that's that starts a substantial use typically. It gets kind of. I would say it gets trickier, you know, at at different points during COVID, this caused some issues. Hence the permit extension acts then and during the recession that happened. This was one of the reasons for it, but it is a. A fairly common. Way of describing that the the project is being built. Along the lines expected, maybe not every single day. There might be some. Times or a particular part of the project is off hold because of weather or something else, but that's part of the use.
I'm familiar with I'm familiar with that law and those cases.
Yeah.
And what it means of my point is. The way this. Could be interpreted is. They started, they have substantial start on building one. I want within that three-year period from the grant of when all everything's approved. That they've at least started the second building.
I I see. Okay, sorry, I I apologize. So that's a. That's a different condition altogether, Tom, I think, is what you're saying, that, you know, building one has to be followed by building three. Building two, excuse me, within the the three-year period. That's a completely different.
That's the question I'm raising. Correct.
And I think that's a question of whether the board wants to have that condition, whether that's a condition. I I don't know that the app we've I have not discussed that condition with the applicant. I don't know. If there's any reaction to that.
So that that. That concern is is different than this condition. This is all of the special permits that the board issues. This is a similar standard condition, but under. The zoning act, it's the special permit shall lapse. After two years substantial use doesn't happen. So this one comprehensive permit law allows three years.
My good friend over here, good lawyer over here, could. If the second building isn't started. We'll say four or five years out. He could, I think, correctly argue. That he's still in conformance with this agreement.
Right.
Because he started and probably would have completed the building one within the three-year period. And the question is, is the town gonna be upset if that second building doesn't get built? Or at least started within the three-year period?
I would suggest that. Well, we haven't had an ability to discuss this on our side, but. I think that. That just creates concerns and issues, getting back to even like, what if there is a COVID type situation? You know, what happens if it through no fault of. The the developer themselves that something happens in the universe. And I think that. You know, this this process contemplating has benchmarks in terms of. Getting something forward and and, you know. Getting everything in place and then getting on to the next phase. So. So to impose an arbitrary three-year deadline, I'm not certain that that's. That the town uses that on any other project. And, you know, just one of the concerns I always want to be careful of is that you're not imposing. Limitations and restrictions on projects that the board doesn't impose on. All market rate units. So it's always a tension that you kind of have to watch that. There's not a special treatment being given to an affordable housing project.
So let me, this is my. I I know a little bit about a lot of things and I'm gonna ask the building commissioner to chime in on this as well. But I imagine that a a building permit will be issued. For each bill, there'll be two separate building permits. They will likely be filed and processed at the same time. And then so under the building code. They have certain. Correct me if I'm wrong, Paul or or Mina. There there are certain time limitations for that building permit that they have to proceed. For the building permit itself lapses. So this decision has a lot of conditions that are tied to the building permits themselves. That if they if they do not move forward, then there's a lot of other things that do not. You know, do not happen and then they would actually be in default. Of this decision anyway. So I think. I think there are already checks and balances. In the process itself. Through this decision and the building code and the building permits. And there's also, correct me if I'm wrong, Mina and Paul, but there's also certain requirements in. The the fire codes where they get to a certain place, they they have to have things buttoned up safe. Certain period of time when the alarms and sprinklers and so there's also checks and balances through the fire code. Of having things progressed, so.
I I I think that's. Elizabeth, I would agree with all that from my perspective. I don't know if Paul has. Additional points, but to the extent they also need an order of conditions. Which I understand they do on the from under the Wetlands Protection Act, that would have its own time limits. And then I guess this one's more for for Stephanie and the Novo team, but I. My recollection is that typically that most of the financing for these kind of projects would also come with some. Timing limitation. So that that's where the protections are. All of that being said, I I I think, Tom, you know, you raise a point that I think is for the boards. The board can certainly consider as an issue, but is is. Is there a risk that a project? Gets permitted and does not get built at all or gets half-built with one building, but not the other? I think that's certainly possible. I would say that. If that can, if there is no no continuation of construction on that second building. And the. and the 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 sort of benefits of the deal for the town and the public is uh, the infrastructure improvements, the affordable units, et cetera, uh, are not getting built. That's when they might be in violation of the permit overall, even without that language. So I this, that's, that's why this is, that's, that's, I think, some of your other protections. I'm not suggesting it mitigates the risk completely because that is certainly a risk that's out there.
Um, Mina, I I I don't think there's any requirement to finish the project in a certain amount of time, but if there's inactivity for a hundred and eighty days, then the permit expires.
Right, right. There's no activity. That's right. Yeah.
But the permit expiring wouldn't mean that they violated the special permit, the building permit.
Violated the building code, yeah, building code.
The building.
Filed for another, I mean, it's an interesting point in the sense that if they say, all right, we filed for building permit three years and now it's ten years later, and they'll be like, well, we did it, so we don't have to do anything.
Mm hmm.
It is an interesting point. It's also trying to mitigate against the risk that a developer is going to do something which we're, everyone can go out of business and that's it for everyone. My mind's totally not at all, so.
And and just by way of background, the actual plan, you know, it's two buildings, but it's one project. And it's disruptive to the office building. So the idea is to get in, make a mess, make it nice and go away and not not do it twice.
The best laid plans of mice and men.
I understood.
But no, I mean, I see what you're saying.
And they won't go up at the, at exactly the same time, but they will, the plan is for them to be sequenced so that you only need one uh, foundation crew. Dig the hole, the foundation crew makes the first foundation, and then they go next door, make a foundation. Then you bring in the framing crew and they frame this building. Then they go next door and they frame the next building. So you only need one team for each function, not two. Saves a lot of money. It's the efficient way to build projects like this.
Hmm.
That, that's what Torres has planned at any rate.
Right, right, right.
But but there's, there's no idea that it would either be smart or economical to phase the two buildings, if you will.
And.
Background.
I don't think we can mitigate against all these risks, although I am curious, Mina, from what you said, at what point, how many years out, would it, would you say, oh, they haven't done anything on the site, even though they filed for something at one point?
Uh, yeah, um, I I I'm glad there's a lot of lawyers on this sport, so I can safely say it depends on this one. Uh, but uh, there, it it really does, and and it depends on the conditions that are out there. Um, as well as what, you know, if if they haven't pulled a permit of any kind, they haven't pulled a building permit, they've let all those lapse. Uh, we have, we know that their financing has lapsed. Uh, the company ha- is no longer going concerned. I mean, there's, those are sort of the easy cases. The harder cases are um, they've had one contractor out the site, they fall through, they try to replace them at the turn, then followed by, you know, a forced majority type event like COVID or something like that. So there, there are trickier cases, but in the usual case, you know, there's uh, there are some, some guideposts for what is sort of an abandoned project. And there's some places where there could be disputes between a developer and the town of, did you abandon this project and abandon the permit? Uh, or did you um, did you intend to keep going? So there there is, there are reasons, certainly, certainly in a private development project, to Tom's point, you would want to structure it, you know, with a a mi- milestones and so on. It's a little more rare in these kind of situations, but there all the protections kind of come in from these other regulatory pieces.
Yeah, and and I'll just mention that the big policeman on the block is our construction lender.
Hmm.
Uh, we will not let us start until they are darn sure.
I feel like Tom might be working for them.
And hang on, Alan wants to chime in. Alan?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Theo. Um, I I just want to remind the board that actually the way our amenities are set up is that if we don't have one building done, we don't have half our amenities. Right? If you remember the way we basically spaced out our our floor plan, so in order for us to be able to hit our pro forma rents, we have to have both of those building amenities online. So it 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 actually goes in reverse. I mean, if there's anybody that's motivated to have both those buildings up, it's us.
Right, right, right.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's it's actually some, you know, I'm thinking, sitting here and thinking about, you know, all your, all your comments here. It's like, you really want to have this built, these buildings built, right?
Yeah. That's like, you want to just make.
I have no further comments, and if I, if you wish to send me a firing letter tomorrow, I will accept.
I know, this is great. This is great. You want to, you want to get it built, so that's good.
So I do, I do have, um, I do have one, one other comment, um, and this was um, a conversation we had, um, and um, Stephanie had provided um, something under the other, the um, other conditions. Um, one second. Uh, yes. This is, this is the parking garage. Um, so under other conditions, um, um, Stephanie had suggested, it is understood that as a condition of the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy for the first building constructed either two ninety two Baker Ave or two ninety four Baker, oh, you don't even have it add. Um, a parking garage to serve three hundred three ten Baker Avenue um, property shall be permitted and substantially constructed at three hundred three ten Baker Ave by the owner thereof. Um, so I'm, I'm recommending something similar, um, but um, just to keep um, to keep this decision in order. Um, it would actually be under F, I mean, E one, conditions that must be satisfied prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy. So the timing of E one is that timing, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for either building constructed at two ninety two or two ninety four Baker Ave. Unless otherwise provided below, the applicant should apply, shall comply with the following. Um, and we have A, B, C, D, E. Um, and the draft says G, it should be F. Um, so this would be a new G. Um, to deal with, um, the applicant shall um, submit and receive approval for the construction of a parking garage. Um, and on three hundred three ten Baker Ave and su- substantially complete uh, that parking garage.
Um, if I may just, I want to call it, um, it it's actually, I had worded it as the owner thereof because Nogo River Side Common LLC owns the Nogo site.
Hmm.
And they're a limited dividend entity. So it.
It, that's fine.
Because you said the applicant, yeah, so I just want to make certain that it's understood that. It's there.
Does that address?
Yes.
We've, we've gone back and forth on this one quite a bit.
Right.
Um, and then uh, my only two other um, comments is when this is finalized, I will um, make it consistent that um, it's, you know, anything that referenced the building inspector, it's actually Building Inspections Division. Um, there was a condition um, that um, a copy of the recorded decision be provided to the town clerk and the building inspector. Um, town clerk doesn't care, um, but the town planner does care about getting a recorded copy. Uh, and then my final question for Mina is, um, I imagine this should have the standard town clerk um, two signature lines, uh, when the decision gets filed with the town clerk, and then the following um, paragraph that says, you know, the twenty day appeal period is expired, there's been no appeal or no court um, judgment, and and so those standard um, signature blocks will be added to the decision. Um, and then finally, this is not going to be done till tomorrow.
Okay.
So somebody else other than Theo will have to sign.
I'll sign.
Good work.
If I had a choice, that. Um, just to go for, and obviously, the note to draft about the exhibit A, so you reviewed and confirmed, will be reviewed and confirmed by um, they approve plans. It just, there's still no to draft.
Yeah, I.
Oh, yes.
In in the version the board has, Elizabeth, yeah.
Yes. Great.
Just one procedural question. Will you still be a member of this board tomorrow?
Yes.
Shouldn't remember till April thirtieth.
Oh, okay, okay.
They just don't have another meeting till then.
Okay, good.
Oh, yeah. That's a good question. That's not your question.
Um. Great.
Anybody else? Any comments?
Oh, um, let me.
Um, let me.
Let me save this.
Yeah. Because I am.
Hmm? There's one hand up.
There's one hand up. Well, I didn't see that. Uh, hang on, let me uh, open it up for public here and and John Danceburger, Danceburger. Please, unmute yourself.
Yes, thank you, Theo, very much. Um, I'm not sure. I'm looking at the same uh, draft uh, that you have been discussing. I pulled down a draft from the town website. Uh, comprehensive permit, uh, and it was a draft dated March twenty six, twenty twenty four. So I, I, I'm not sure if I, the pagination is the same that you were referring to, but um.
It's not, it's not, it's been, it's been rebuilt.
It has been, all right. Uh, may may I, may I direct my comments regarding, because I don't have the other draft uh, version in front of me. Uh, may I?
John, can I get your address, please?
Oh, yes. I beg your pardon, seventeen Concord Green.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Thank you very much. Um, may I direct, this is about the construction, uh, uh, handling the construction, and it's the, again, I'm referring to the comprehensive permit decision uh, draft, uh, March twenty six, twenty four. I understand this probably, uh, it appears it's been amended. But with respect to that document, uh, I'm looking at page ten. And it's the conditions to be satisfied prior to commencement of any site work, and it's talking about the construction. Uh, the review, the nec- the necessity for review and approval of a construction, safety and sequencing plan for the site. And if I may direct a couple of comments to that particular provision. Um, we have a, uh, as you know, uh, Concord Green, we have uh, over two hundred units. We have uh, at least that number of people, actually more here at Concord Green, and in the immediate vicinity is, it is a very uh, tight residential area. Uh, and I'm respectfully requesting that uh, the conditions for construction uh, really, um, a few amendments, uh, because a couple of things. Again, this is a residential area. Um, and right now, the wording, at least in this draft, is that the construction shall occur, uh, pardon me, construction shall only occur Monday through Saturday between the hours of seven AM and five PM. Uh, except that during the months of June through August, construction activities may continue until seven PM. Um, the only, the only exception is federal holidays for some reason, but that's, that's fine. Um, the hours, again, this is a residential area. Uh, and we are, you know, we want to be welcoming here. Uh, but you have a number of people uh, who are uh, advanced elders, and you also have a number of people who commute during the week. Um, so uh, we would respectfully request, I am speaking on my own behalf, by the way, uh, as a resident of Concord Green. Uh, that consideration be given to uh, minimizing the construction hours uh, on the weekends, perhaps, uh, instead of seven AM to five PM. Right now, it's Monday through Saturday. That those hours be restricted to, say, nine PM to five PM on Saturdays and Sundays so that people have time to uh, rest up, get out in the morning and walk. Uh, and uh, I think also uh, that uh, continuing until seven PM through June through August is a tremendous imposition uh, in the community. If we could restrict the hours back to perhaps five PM, uh, that seems a reasonable time so that people can get out. Again, uh, uh, we have a lot of people who are walking in the area and trying to get in. Uh, another can, uh, consideration, I think that's essential, is that this construction site is also a major healthcare site. There are a number of medical offices over in this area and on in the Baker Ave complex that we're talking about. Um, we have a number of people coming uh, in the media, in the immediate community, walking to medical appointments. Some individuals are, must use walkers. Uh, we have individuals who use canes. Uh, and I think that uh, in light of this, as a healthcare uh, really healthcare center, uh, with the medical offices, Emerson Hospital has some offices over their rehab facilities and so on, that uh, particular attention uh, should be given to how this construction site is handled, above and beyond the usual, you know, putting up a building on a street. Um, we have some unique circumstances here, and uh, I think it's imperative the safety is a priority. Uh, and and it should be handled as such. Uh, and that would go to with respect to the construction staging that, to the extent feasible, the the uh, staging areas, offsite trailers and so on, or site office trailers, storage trailers, containers, et cetera, to the extent feasible that they remain on the construction site itself uh, and uh, and not offsite. And also that the truck traffic, to the extent feasible, be required to exit onto Baker Ave Extension onto Route Two, the shortest path available out to the public roads uh, to avoid, to the extent possible, uh, or to, at least to mitigate uh, extreme heavy construction traffic on Baker Ave Extension. It's already an extremely busy uh, thoroughfare as it is.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much for those uh, those.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Yeah, uh, the uh, the the.
Sales are. So um, what I can tell you, um, I'm going to go in reverse order. So the applicant, um, through the conversations with um, the police department, the fire department, engineering, Conca Public Works Engineering, um, and during this process, um, their construction's um, sequencing and safety plan will be um, thoroughly reviewed, and everybody is already in um, agreement and understanding that the truck traffic will come off um, Baker Ave from, Baker Ave Extension from Route Two um, in and out of um, the site and will not come out onto Baker Avenue, um, Baker Ave. Um, the um, the construction noise um, time limits. Um, actually, I do not believe the board has the jurisdiction to make that um, more restrictive. It is already more restrictive than the town's current construction noise bylaw. Um, which is um, generally um, seven AM to eight PM on weekdays and Saturdays. Uh, and um, for Sundays, uh, it cannot start before eight AM and um, it's eight AM to six PM on uh, Sundays um, and the following holidays. Um, so what's in the current permit is already more restrictive um, than the town, um, the town's current construction noise bylaw. So.
Good, good, yeah.
But I I I can, I can assure you, there's going to be a lot of people reviewing the construction staging and sequencing plan. Um, and um, all um, construction activity is required to remain on the site. Um, there is um, a condition in the decision that no construction um, vehicles can park on the public roads. Um, it all has to be maintained on the site.
Yeah, and 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 in sight, I think we we will, we're seeing a bit more liberal, not just construction site, but you know, all Baker Ave, Baker Ave, uh, you know, three hundred and three ten.
Can I just ask a question in response to this lady's question? Uh, the road that comes in from Baker Avenue into the site.
That will be gated.
Be gated, but what will, whatever its width is now is quite large because you've got parking availability. Nobody's ever there, but you might have it. When the construction starts, when their activity starts, what will be the width of the usable way? Do we know?
That that will not be, that will not be a u- usable way.
But it's zero because they'll block that off.
So you can't come in to that, into the, that uh.
No.
Correct.
Sure. Sure. Off Baker Avenue?
Correct.
Have to go around because that's, that's a life.
So you go up, down the Baker Avenue Extension and come, everybody.
Yes.
Is going to the medical assistance, et cetera.
Yes.
So the folks that she's talking about, how will they get to their medical appointments? Well, they can't walk, I mean, they can't walk all the way up there and around.
But yeah, but if if you're a walker, you also don't walk from uh, Concord Green to uh, to Emerson's uh, physical therapy up the hill. Actually, you can do that because that that doesn't go through the site. But if you want to go to three hundred or three ten, um, you know, that's, that's a hike if you, you know, with a walker.
You, there will, there will be no pedestrian access through there. Um.
And it's just a matter of safety.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Good. Um, what's your, uh, no other hands I'm seeing up here? And so close to public comment section. And so close the public comments section. And at this point, I would like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing. For this project.
I know that we closed the public hearing.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I have it, then, then. Are we going? Before, 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 before we get started on, on the big, the big thing here, I, I, I would just like to really thank everybody who is involved with this project, you know, and first of all, I think the applicant, thank the applicant that, you know, they brought forth a pretty done, a good project. And then during the process, wanted to play ball and, and made the, the project better. So, you know, I'm also looking at you, Alan, but you're not, you're not here. So thank you, thank you for doing that. I also want to, want to thank the the people from Concord and the various stakeholders. There's not that many people here online tonight, but I think we tried to listen to the people at Concord about us as much as we could and we really appreciate the various stakeholders to, to bring forth their comments and concerns. I think they made the project a bit better. I'd also like to thank consultants, our peer review consultants and town staff. And that's also, that's, that's a lot of people, but you know, thank you so much. Did a great job. That was, this was, this was a lot. And you did, we did great. And I think the project is, is a lot better for that. So thank you. And last but not least, I like to thank my fellow board members here that this was a little bit out of, out of the special permit real house that, that we usually deal with. So, but I think, you know, you guys did, did great. All your contributions, I think, made this a, a better project. And I think this, in the end, this is a project that, not just the board, but I think everybody will be very proud of when, when this is all constructed. This is going to be a, a great project. So thank you all for, for playing ball and, and getting through this process that we just need by here, I think we made it within, well, 180 and plus 40 days. We still, we still made it. So that, that is great, even with a, with a dot of one public meeting in there. So thank you so much for everybody's hard work on this. And with that said, I would like to afford the opportunity here, grant the floor to, as her last piece of.
We do have more hearings tonight.
But, but this is, this is, this is the, that's, that's.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, you, no, after this, I mean, if you want to go.
Look at that.
But, but, but you know, you, so everybody, everybody knows that this is your last hearing, your last, your last. And we're sad to see you go, but.
You're going to see me again at the MCI thing, I think, so.
Great, great. So.
Thank you for doing, do such a great job of leading us through this because you were a new chair to this full board and this is all on chartered, chartered territory for all of us. So thank you. I think you did an excellent job.
I did.
Despite any technical issues that were not your fault, that you might have gotten blamed for, but we're not your fault. So thank you very much. And I, with that, will move that we approve the application by Noble Riverside Commons LLC for a comprehensive permit pursuant to MGL Chapter 40B, Sections 20 to 23, for a 201 unit multifamily development at 292 and 294 Baker Avenue, parcel number 3794-1, which is a 10.2 acre portion of the real property known and numbered as 300 and 310 Baker Avenue.
Based on.
Based on the decision.
And conditions.
There's a date on this.
Of the decision as amended this evening and authorize the clerk to sign the decision on behalf of the board.
Can I authorize myself to sign a decision?
Yes.
Okay.
The eyes.
She's just moving it. She's not authorizing it. So just moving it.
Yeah, just moving it. That's right. There we go.
Five seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much. This is great, this is great.
Thank you, Mina.
Thanks, Mina.
Hey, have a good night. Congrats.
Thanks.
Thanks very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all of your patience with us. Well, same, thank you.
It's going to be good.
Few things to come. Yeah, that's great. Yeah, thank you. It's a great project.
Yeah, we'll see you again.
We'll see what the ripping cutting, right?
Exactly.
Oh yeah, that's you guys.
We'll see you about a half hour. Looking forward to it.
You know what to expect also.
Yes.
Okay, okay, okay. Since it's 7:05.
Somewhere.
Matthew and Gail Burr for a special permit. And we're promising that this is going to be quicker. That's. Matthew and Gail Burr for a special permit on the zoning bylaw Sections 4222 and 116 for a 1,000 square foot detached additional dwelling units at 287 Lindsay Pond Road. Anybody here to speak on behalf?
Good evening. My name is Bruce Ringwall from both the Preston Ringwall. Virtually here this evening is Matthew and Gail Burr and Shannon Georgian, the architect from 111 Works for the property. And I don't know if you want to share your screen.
Who is your architect?
Shannon Georgian.
Okay.
Share her screen? Or they won't let, on her camera?
Yeah.
No, no, he can.
She's, she's closed now, so.
Right ahead.
They're, they're cute.
Well, do you, do you?
No, no, she's fine. She's fine. She can share screen.
Shannon, are you prepared to share your screen for any of the architecturals on this?
Oh no, I just was trying to turn on my camera, but I, they didn't know who I was, so I couldn't until they.
Yeah, I, I, I was planning on doing the presentation for all purposes.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
So what do you need up?
You can start with site plan, this is 287 Lindsay Pond Road. Start with the site plan and/or I can have the dial on thumb drive if it's easier for you. Or you can put up her architecture.
We're pulling it up here. Which plan would you like to?
Floor plan, existing site plan and stormwater? No.
Let's go with the, the.
Building permit plan?
No. Let's try the.
Sewerage disposal plan? And you have floor plan and elevations?
Floor plan and elevations would be a great place. And you can jump right to the next sheet if you would, please. Super. So the property is located at 287 Lindsay Pond Road. There is an existing building there now, which we're proposing to raise and replace with a, a smaller building and a ADU, detached ADU, which you have up on the screen right now. Just for a little bit of background, the site itself is a 2.64 acre property using the formula for allowable FAR on the property. The property could have quote unquote 28,821 square feet. We're going to be looking at putting in a single family main unit of 2,500 square feet in round numbers. And in ADU, we're asking for 999 square feet up from your 750 by red.
How, how big is the current home?
The current home, I think, I thought I had that number in here and I was looking for it myself a little bit earlier. I don't have that number on here, but the current home. I'm going to guess that it's about 36 to 3700 square feet. It's a two-story colonial with a two-car garage.
Just make sure the ADU and the new house will be about the same square footage as the existing house.
That is correct. Actually, a little bit smaller, 3541 will be our total square footage for .12 with our allowed FAR being .25. So less than half of, you know, what's there. The existing house was built in 1965, right around the start of Lindsay Pond Road. I'm sure you, I'm many, much, many of you familiar with Lindsay Pond Road. But for this particular dwelling, in accordance with the guidelines for allowing the special permit, this building nestles into the setback. There's an existing earthen berm with some large amount of vegetation on it. We're going to be modifying that vegetation. There's a lot of invases. We'll be taking that out and beautifying that with the process. This is a, an image of the proposed structure. It's intended to look like a cottage adjacent to the other structure, the single family home, which is intended to look like a barn. So the two will match. We have, and I guess, again, as I was starting to say, in accordance with your guidelines for the special permit to without the substantial detriment to the neighborhood and without degradating from the intended purpose of the bylaw, we have three letters of recommendation from a butters liking what the burs have done in the neighborhood, as well as preserving the last buildable lot as open space. And the proposed site work here, they're all, those folks have been in, are all in favor of that. And because you've had such a long night, I'll keep it short and sweet and that. I've turned it over to you for any questions.
Any questions?
Does the ADU have a basement?
It does.
Does that include it in the 9900?
It is not. Further guidelines of the bylaw?
I don't think that is permitted.
I believe it is. I've had lengthy conversations with Paul and the building department. And I have the definitions here as well relative to the FAR piece. But if Paul would like to address that, that'd be fine, or Elizabeth.
I'm, I'm, I'm going to let Paul address this. It's a conversation that we had recently.
Yeah, we haven't been counting basements in the square footage.
You have, I have not.
We have not.
You have not.
Even when it's livable finished space, or that doesn't make a difference?
Regardless, yeah, we have not.
So this is the recent conversation we have, we've had regarding the difference between Section 4222, the definition of gross square footage. And that is, that's that, and that, that's different than maximum, you know, maximum floor area ratio. Maximum floor area ratio deals with mass and what is permitted on a property. And 4222 deals with gross floor area, which is the definition under Section 1. So I'm, I'm not sure that this is a, a question that's been resolved.
I would suggest, because as long as I'm on the board, that question's going to keep coming up for me. Because I believe 4221 and its two paragraphs.
We're, we're.
No, I know, I know it.
We're not under 4221.
I understand that. Listen to me.
Okay, sure.
In order to interpret 4222, I'm saying, well, how do you, how do you do your calculation? How do you figure your calculation?
It's based on the definition.
And if you go back to 4221, where it's very specific about what you can count. And I suggest that when you drafted and accepted 4222, had you wanted to include the same definitions, you would have included those in 4222, which weren't included. And therefore, I don't think you are permitted to have, you could have the basement if you include that in your 999. But if you don't include that, then I don't think you can do it. And to the extent we have this agreement, because it's going to come up again. We had another one last week or I would have argued the same position that we may have to go to town council and, because otherwise I would always oppose the concept of the project. I like the project. I'm not arguing the project. I'm not arguing against ADUs. I think it's fabulous. And I think they're doing a great thing and the neighbors' letters are terrific. So I'm not against that. But I, I think we need to clarify now whether I'm right, because if I'm wrong, that will change, obviously, a lot of these applications. If I'm correct, it will also change a lot of the applications. Paul?
Go on, let's, yeah.
And I'd be glad to, if, if the board were to, to agree, hey, let's have town council resolve it once and for all. I'd be happy to draft a position of what I think should be the interpretation, so he could also have that to consider, along with Paul's in, in Elizabeth, look at it differently, so the town council will have the complete picture.
If I may, as I do with all projects, I met with town staff prior to, we had as a design team, these questions. I've been doing this for a long time. I reviewed through the zoning. My feeling was that it was a permitted thing, but I met with Paul and, and his staff and we reviewed it and they agreed that the basement is not counted in the, in this manner and had not been in previous ones. And therefore, the applicants engaged their design team to move forward with this design as presented for you this evening.
So I'll just be clear with the applicants. His firm is great. That is no question. I, I used them in my prior career. I have no quarrel with this firm. In fact, they're very good. So that's not the issue.
I'd have a very hard time arguing against your proposal. I think it makes total sense. I think it's ambiguous, especially if you go back to the definition of gross, gross floor area in Section 1, if that's what we're going off of. And what you said about the specific exclusion of, or inclusion of the exclusion of basement, right? So I think it would be very appropriate, that's town council.
Yep, I, I, I don't disagree. I don't disagree.
I was also made aware today that, you know, they are also going through the Natural Resources Commission process. And there's some, there's conversation about the location of the structures still ongoing, so.
Things that change.
Um, yeah, we, we've been asked by the Conservation Commission to show them examples and why our building is where they are. There is a, this building, again, being built in 1965, is within the 50-foot no disturb zone, which was not a regulation at that timeframe. And Delia has stated, and it's, if you can go back and can hear on the, on the minutes from the meeting two weeks ago from last night, where she clearly says, and she did in our earlier meetings that I had with the NRC before as well, that, that you have an existing structure, you may not go closer than that existing structure. Not only are we not going closer than that existing structure, we are reducing our footprint within that, the 50-foot zone. And we are doing modifications and restoration of the buffer zone. So we just need to present to the commission some of our examples of how and why we aren't able to move the building back with the stuff that's there. We're not looking at changing our architecture. We, we spent a lot of time and energy and effort to get to this point. So what we have presented is, is where we're headed to. We just have to provide them with evidence of why we're where we're in.
Good.
I, I understand your frustration. I mean, I, a lot of, well, there's no way, there's no way around it. I mean, I've been on that side too. So there's no way around it until we all get in a room and start talking about it to disagree with Elizabeth or to agree with her or, you know, to have these conversations. I'm just acknowledging, it is frustrating, but.
Yeah, and it, yeah, and as, 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 it's, it's pretty ambiguous, so.
I really think that, if I may, one more thing, the only thing I'd say that's frustrating is, is that you have a very great process in town on special permit and CBA applications whereby they go before your staff for a month before we get to apply, to wait a month to get on this meeting.
Yeah.
So now there's just in the 11th hour, there's this, let's ask. So now there's just in the eleventh hour, there's this, let's ask town council for an interpretation.
Well, but but that 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 being said, but that it's the eleven hour to you maybe, but it it is, you know, this is this is the approving uh. Uh authority, right? It's not that at the first hour you get this revolver, that happens too. You don't need to go there, but you know, it's a process that you have to go to and and now. And I think, you know, we we have, especially if you need to go back to uh. Um NRC, you know, there is a little bit of time here that I do wanna use to, because it it's gonna help us. We had the last meeting also in in issue with any pretty much the same thing, um so. And and I I totally agree with Tom, you know, I was. Uh until he raised that, I was I was here uh ready to to approve this. Uh because, you know, you got your nice ladders, et cetera, so I am. I I'm I'm willing, I'm 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 suggesting here, Tom, that you uh write up the question.
But Tom, can I add something to that? Additional dwelling unit Chalaki Pi, no more than seven hundred and fifty square feet of gross floor area of the detached accessory structure, so. If you or or the single-family dwelling, if you have a giant single-family house, which you could have on a lot this big. And the basement was three thousand square feet. You made the entire basement an ADU and had ten square feet of a landing at the top of the stairs. Now you can have a three thousand square foot ADU because the basement doesn't count, but I I think that's another. Good reason, I I can't read this away.
So let me uh open it up for public comment here, see whether there is any um.
Can I ask something?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, so I I mean, in in terms of timeline. It it sounds like projects like this have been approved in the past with the way we interpreted um, you know, square footage before. And we were advised that we should move forward with this design. And I and I see it's ambiguous, can that be for future projects because we were um advised otherwise?
We we will ask town council.
I'm I'm not aware that we've necessarily approved an ADU with this.
No, no, but I bet you there's seven hundred and fifty square foot.
With the basement.
With a basement approved and have and potentially constructed, right? So that I think that's the approval that she is uh.
Well, she's asking if we're gonna approve now, but it's. Um we we can add this to the, you know, request for town council to provide their opinion. Um but um you know, this is is not the first time, you know, town staff. Goes through, has a process, um and you know. Questions about the or interpretations about the zoning bylaw happen all the time. And they happen at different stages, different projects, um and ultimately, a project comes before the. The zoning board of appeals, um you know, re- regardless of what I say. Um and, you know. Paul's determinations can be appealed to this board, and you are the ultimate, you know, board who makes those. You know, those determinations as far as interpreting the zoning bylaw, so um. I'm I'm uh I'm I'm just, it 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 seems to be um. You know, town staff being put in a position where we we do not, you know, we do our best. Um and but there's certain different situations come up for everything, so um. Paul and I will um work with Tom and um we will put forth the question to. Um town council for the board, along with the question about how do these other existing, you know, permitted. Um situations um get handled, um and then this current application before the board.
I have a couple of quick questions that I may.
Um sure, go ahead.
Um number one, the first one's not a question, first one's a comment, there is. We're not putting any blame on 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 town staff from this, from Paul or NRC or anybody else. Who's just saying, this is the process we went through, and I like the process uh from from where it stands from. Um if you are preparing something to go to town council um as an argument. In one direction on this, I think it's only fair that the applicant be able to prepare an argument for why we believe that the. The interpretation that we have used is the appropriate interpretation as well. Um and I think that that should go, that's my, that's my first question.
Um so um typically, um the, a question is posed to town council, not an argument. So um the the facts are provided on this is, you know, this is what's before them, this is how it's been interpreted. This is the question that has been raised and town council provides the opinion, so they they have. You know, they have all the facts before them of how things, you know. How it got to this point, how it got to the board, and then what the board's.
Yeah, the town council's not an arbiter here, they're just advising the board. Us to make the decision and your legal arguments go to the court if you wanna, if you disagree with us, right? So I I think.
I I I just had heard, you know, that.
If you have those arguments, we're we're happy to hear them and consider them.
Well, I think you're responding to Tom saying that he's gonna write a memo. For his position.
Point out why I don't think you can have the pro- the. With the given provisions of this.
And 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 that goes all, so he already said, he likes the project. He just, he he just thinks that the the wording legally is not allowed, but otherwise he. So, you know, I, we need clarity, we need clarity.
Basement, we don't have a problem.
If we hear of the basement, the project doesn't work in the manner that it's intended to work.
But I mean, the applicant can submit material, any materials they want as part of the application at any time, right?
Right, 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 right.
So if you do that, Tom will read it.
And my second and last question to this man, or I think I heard earlier that several of you are not going to be on this board for the next meeting. Okay.
Yes, yeah, yeah. So let me close uh the. No, close the public uh, I asked for public, right, public comment, there was no public comments, I'm closing the public comment section.
For tonight.
For tonight, yeah, for tonight, um. Well, I was just, I just closed it, but Mister uh Mister Feely. You can.
Thank you, um and I'm glad, Rich Feely, three forty-seven Lexington Road. And I'm glad to see uh auxiliary dwelling units coming forward, I'm just trying to clarify. Am I correct that there is a standard condition for new ones that they cannot be used for short-term rentals? Is that correct?
Correct.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, glad to hear that.
Yeah, good, um. So that was the end of the public comment section for tonight, um. I think we're ready for a motion to continue this with uh the understanding that Tom is gonna.
I'll give you something by Monday or Tuesday.
Yep, then Paul and I can um work on that.
And then we'll continue to May ninth at what time?
We already have the other ADU on there, right? That wasn't even seven o'clock, that was, I don't think that was seven o'clock either.
No, that was later.
Theo, we have a few applicants and the next time slot that's open is seven thirty-five.
Seven thirty-five, I mean, long evening, you're gonna be coming back. So uh a motion to the you uh this application.
Uh I move to continue the application of Matthew. Of Matthew and Gail Burr for a special permit under zoning bylaw sections forty-two-two, eleven-six, right, thousand square foot.
So, sorry, um so and Kim can verify for me, um. You already have one, two, three, four applications, um the fourth one is at seven fifteen. So Kim, correct me if I'm wrong, this could be at seven twenty? I don't know if she's still on.
No, she's gone.
Nope, she's there.
So the next one, Elizabeth, would be seven thirty-five for May ninth, that's the next opening.
So it goes from seven fifteen to seven thirty-five?
No, seven, seven, seven o'clock to seven fifteen. Oh, sorry, my my, oh, sorry, yep, seven twenty, sorry.
Twenty, thank you.
Okay. What I said before, detached additional dwelling unit at two eighty-seven Lindsay Pond Road um. To uh May ninth at seven twenty PM.
And I second.
On paper, say aye. May nine, May ninth is all virtual, by the way.
Sorry.
All virtual, this was just for tonight, because.
Ta-da.
Ta-da, and and we had no vote, so.
Yeah.
So that's, that's gonna be virtual. Um, seven-ten, Bonnie Albright, for renewal of a special permit on the zoning bylaw section five-three fifteen and eleven-six. To operate a tourist home at three oh seven Main Street, um anybody here to speak? Yeah, Bonnie is still there. Bonnie, are you, are you still there? During two hours of this? Bonnie, you can unmute yourself if you wish to. If not, I'm gonna be pulling up the the meeting documents and do. The presentation for. Uh so this is a uh. Uh the application for renewal permission for to use a portion of the residence for as a short-term rental unit. Unit was approved in twenty eighteen, renewed in twenty nineteen. And so this is we asking for a second five-year uh renewal uh of this. Uh of this permit. Um as the uh the narrative says, uh neighbors uh are in favor, even used. The short-term rental, so um it's it's even uh it's. It's pretty clear, so um that's the application, anybody, any comments?
No, as long as there isn't any issues.
No, that's, that was on my, um Paul.
Yeah, I have a question, because there's this revised narrative. Which mentions a second room, was the old permit for the two rooms or was the old permit for just one room?
Yay, Bonnie, Bonnie's on, yep, yep, Bonnie, go ahead.
Hi, I was just, um I think I was on so long it froze up, so I could, I was hitting unmute and it didn't work.
You fell asleep during the.
No, not at all, I've been, I've been paying it close to ten. Yes, so just, I I missed a little bit cuz I had to leave and return, but just what Paul was saying, this is a renewal uh for the room one. And then um in my reading of five dot three dot fif- fifteen, um one can have up to three rooms rented. So I have another room that would be a good candidate, there was a separate entrance and a bathroom, um. Um so I'd like to renew room one and and talk about and see if room two is an option. In order to do room two, I would have to, I think, get hardwired smokes in there. Um and talk to Paul about making that, making sure that's in compliance as a bedroom, I'm not sure if I'm using the proper terminology.
Yeah, you are, it 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 will need a building permit to make sure it meets the requirement of a sleeping.
Um I've, I can say that I've, this is. I had a a permit first pulled in two thousand eighteen, renewed in two thousand nineteen. So I've been running and operating this with no complaints from the neighbors for six years. Um lots of people actually in the town will use it when they have visiting grandparents or um babies born. Or friends are visiting town, so um. I do have some letter, letters of support from my neighbors as well, on the record.
Thank, thank you, we we saw that, and Paul, there's no been, no, any, no complaints, right?
No, none, none, no.
Should should this be then several renewals, a new permit granted?
Yeah, I think, I think this is gonna be a renewal and a new permit, or.
So new permit including both?
Or new permit including both.
No, I mean, it looks like there's four parking spaces, which seems like enough, right?
Right, 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 let me open it for public comment, uh see whether there is anybody online who wants to speak. Seeing no raised hands, uh I close the public comment section and indeed, as as mentioned before, there were. At least a couple of letters in support on file, so um. What's the uh the temperature of the board here?
I have no issues with it, looks good.
Yeah, I.
Yep.
Okay. He's busy.
Um so just again, just granting a new instead of renewal, you're saying?
Like, like granting a new permit.
So I, yeah, I didn't see the old ones, I don't know if there's any difference to the conditions that we need to talk about or not, but.
Be standard conditions, right?
Yeah, there will be standard conditions, and and although this is a new permit, we'll do five years.
I think that makes sense.
Which typically is, you know, we do one year for new permit, but since there is back record.
I I agree with that. Okay, well, Ryan, while you're looking at it, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we approve the um. Application um from Bonnie Albright for a special permit under zoning bylaw section five point three point fifteen and eleven point six. To operate a tourist home at three oh seven Main Street, parcel number oh seven three two, adding that second. Um bedroom and subject to standard conditions.
Yeah, uh well, I would say with the same conditions as in the previous permit. Mute status and attendance for.
Yes.
Having two rooms instead of one.
Yes, I agree, yes, I'll.
Hold it in favor.
Aye.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you, um can I ask a quick question? Do I need to then, um I'll need to record this on my deed as well, like I have in the past?
Um yes, so we'll have to prepare, prepare a new decision, um that'll take. Um it it won't take that long, but then that gets filed with the town clerk, there's a twenty-day appeal period. Um you'll be notified of that, um and then the decision will be ready, you can um pick it up or we can mail it to you. But yes, it gets recorded um at the registry, it gets deeds again.
Okay, thank you.
But um during that time period, um you can apply for um your building permit and and go through and talk to Paul about what you need. Um um during that twenty-day appeal period.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, seven fifteen, target painting and contracting for a sign variance on the signed by law sections three, C two and H B. To allow a third hanging sign at eighty-ninth Road Street, anybody here, the applicant who uh wishes to speak? Please raise your hand. Anybody?
Don't think so. I don't think the applicant's here.
We don't see the applicant here, so what do we wanna do?
I mean, I don't think it's as straightforward, but.
I looked at it pretty carefully, I don't think they're entitled to the sign, unfortunately.
Yeah, there's more signs on, more hanging signs than anybody, you know, go by there, but that, you know, that was my mind.
It's a principal sign, two are allowed, but there are three types, as we know, et cetera, et cetera. And this, here they're asking for a variance.
Right.
And I don't see that they don't identify in their uh statement, their narrative, any basis for a for a variance. Now, they show some photographs of similar facilities on that street with some, but that to me doesn't carry the day, so. Were I voting, I would say they're not entitled to this variance.
Good, good, but hmm?
Just look at the variances of under the sign by law.
Cases which haven't been contemplated by us, well, I don't think this case is not contemplated, cases where enforcement involves practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know if you want to ask Paul, he's been.
Paul, yeah, Paul, uh wanna chime in?
Yeah, Theo, these these signs have been there since I started with town, I don't, I don't know how they were allowed. Yeah, Theo, these, these signs have been there since I started with town. I don't, I don't know how they were allowed. There's, I think, four businesses with these hanging signs. And, um, I just, uh, I just don't know how they were allowed. It's clear, it clearly says only two principal signs are allowed. So, I don't.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna be my question. It's like, if these guys can't have it, do we have to take the other ones down?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, because, I mean, there's like two right next to it. There's like three in a row.
Yeah, but they.
And this one is the shortest even of them.
Yeah, but they, this, 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 this particular building has two fronts, so they have, where they have, there's only one front, yeah. So they may only have two signs, yeah, yeah.
Um, so.
Well, then.
Sorry, I, um, I, I didn't look at this sooner, but, um, these hanging signs, um. Have, have they been there before the section of the sign by law was adopted? Could they be considered legal non-conforming?
I, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure. But this, this is a new sign, so.
Well, target painting just moved in.
Yeah.
Recently.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is a new sign, so.
Somebody else might have been grandfathered in.
Yeah, exactly.
When they put up their new sign, right?
Yeah.
Uh, well, no, is it just, uh, like if the post was there? The post was there and the sign was there and all they did was.
That's not the case, right? Is there a post there?
The post might have been there, but then put their own name.
Yeah, but that, but that, but then you modifying the sign. I think that, that would be my argument.
Yeah, well, you know, for them to argue where it's, the case is not contemplated, right? Well, this is the, this is the corner. So they do have two fronts versus usually you just have one.
Would you argue to continue this in the upcoming year? I don't know.
Uh-huh, yeah, no, I, I was. Hmm?
Do you mean let the argue? Let them argue.
Yeah, yeah, so, okay, um, applicant is not here, so, um. I'm not even gonna, I'm just gonna continue it and I'll even up, open it for public comment.
Great.
Um, so.
Um, I move that we continue this hearing until May nine at seven twenty-five.
Second, all in favors.
Aye.
Aye. And I was just hoping that for the last deed on the board, well, besides signing.
Is that the last one?
That was the last, oh, no, every other one. They two could, they two could, uh, debate a variant.
It's a side variance. It's not the same.
Okay, um, being, being at at seven thirty, Howard J. Stolberg, junior, for a special permit with, uh, site liner review. On the zoning by law section four, two, three, seven, two, seven, seven, two, twelve, eleven, six and eleven, eight. For combined business resident use in the Flot Lane Controversy District. And relief and required open space and parking for fourteen parking spaces at one sixteen Commonwealth Avenue. The applicant has requested a, uh, withdrawal, whether we could.
Without prejudice.
Approve a withdrawal without prejudice.
Well, that sounds okay to me.
I have no problem with that.
Um, I'll move that we, um, accept the, request for withdrawal application without prejudice.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Um, with that, that was the last item on the, uh, last item on the agenda.